Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. And with that, we can do a roll call or we?
Erickson.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Calrus.
Here.
Woodward. Jaeger.
Yes.
Gorham.
Here.
And Duval.
And here, and now my microphone is on. Make sure we have our microphones on. Um, so with that, we've got a full, we've got a full house by golly.
Been awhile.
It has been awhile. So with that, um, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. While we're just firing through this, uh, looking now, we're at item four on the agenda. Um, looking for approval, um, or amendments, uh, to the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Motion to approve, Jaeger.
Is there a second?
Second, Erickson.
Alright, Erickson. Any discussion? Alright, we'll go to voice vote. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Alright, now we're moving to approval of the minutes. We've got two minutes. Um, to approve here tonight, uh, one is our workshop held on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. I believe we had a revised.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, in front of you, I said it out earlier today, but also in front of you is a revised, um, copy of the minutes from the August eighteenth. Uh, we noticed, uh, there was one, there was some, an uncompleted sentence in the, one of the first paragraphs under final plat, and then we just added a little more detail regarding discussion about that conservation easement as well.
Alrighty, so that's there in front of us. Folks need a moment to look at that. And with that, why don't we, uh, why don't we move to, um, five, uh, item five, number two, the regular meeting minutes, since those are, are, uh, unaudited or, uh, un, um, adjusted? Um, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move, Erickson.
Erickson, is there a second?
Second, Jaeger.
Jaeger, any discussion on that? Let's go to voice vote. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Same sign, opposed? That's done. Um, workshop, are we ready to take a vote on the workshop minutes?
Uh, motion to, motion to approve, Jaeger.
Jaeger, is there a second?
Second, Gorham.
Gorham, any discussion on those minutes? Alright, voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Alright, we're done, item five. Um, we're at old business, um, six A. Do we have, um, Attorney Langle, uh, joining us tonight?
He is, he is online.
Okay, thank you. Um, and welcome, Joe, to our meeting tonight.
Thank you.
So, um, at this point, uh, David, um, you have, um, a memo, um, prepared on that and an attachment of, uh, revised, uh, application, um, based on comments that were received at our last meeting. I don't know if we necessarily have to read through the, uh, the staff report itself unless, uh, someone would like to have us read through that. Otherwise, if there's a specific, uh, feedback you're looking for on the, um, the, uh, request for accommodation amendments.
So with those, again, from based off the feedback when we discussed in our last meeting, um, I just split them into the two forms, very much like, um, the forms from Saint Paul uses. So you have one, which is the more generic reasonable accommodation form that can be used for pretty much any, anyone requesting accommodation for pretty much anything. Um, specifically, it's geared towards, uh, a, a facility or residential facility, but could be used in theory for, um, anything where someone's requesting special, uh, reasonable accommodation, um, from the code. And the second form is that sober home addendum that has the very specific sober home questions to it, uh, to be used to kind of get, again, just to determine that, uh, the applicant is indeed, um, a genuine sober home and not just someone who's calling themselves a sober house to get around regulations. So unless there's any other, pretty much the, looking from here tonight would be, um, are there anything else that the commission sees as missing from these forms? Um, should the, just kind of a process, um, what we'd be looking for, the commission tonight, if you think this form looks good, will be rec, would be a motion to recommend sending this form to the city council for adoption and then incorporation into our rental housing ordinance, our rental housing licensing process. Um, so once we get that done, they might be formatted a little different, kind of obviously on the cities, um, letterhead and things like that, make it formulate like all our other forms, but all the content would be the same.
Alrighty, thank you, David. Are there any questions of staff on, uh, on the, um, request for special accommodation form and addendum? David, I have, um, two questions on this. Uh, the first is, um, this form would function either with, uh, zoning code five hundred, five fifteen or rental code four twenty-five? Am I correct on that? It can function in either way or?
It should be able to function in either way. It's generic enough that I think someone, depending on what kind of accommodation they requested, it would, it could work. Um, I specifically, in that section, in that very first form, it's very blank, it's very broad where it just asks them to, application is hereby made for reasonable accommodation by providing an exception from city code requirements and sections, and it's blank. So it's not, you know, pre-filled out for four twenty-five or five fifteen. So whatever that accommodation they feel like there could be, in theory, it could be from almost any section of that code, but generally speaking, it'd be four twenty-five and five fifteen.
Thank you. And the second question I have for you, are you aware of any, uh, protected data that would be collected on these forms that we'd have to be mindful of, um, as we process through that or, or how we publicly display any information that may be collected or?
I don't believe there is any. We, um, pretty much all of our forms, once you submit this, it's a public data. Um, the one exception from the community development department that we gather is in rental housing licenses. If someone were to ask for that, we would, would redact, um, social security card numbers are asked for on those, we redact that. Um, but that, they're really, social security is really the only, um, sensitive data that we collect, and we only collect those in certain circumstances, and in this situation, we're not asking for that. Um, name, phone number, email, address, those are all things, um, that can be publicly requested and would necess, would necessarily have to be redacted from a form if someone requested this form. Um, but any, any data that would be given that potentially could be sensitive, um, and someone requests, uh, so it's data request, we redact that before that data is, that information is issued to the requister.
Thank you. So, um, so we're not getting down to the details of names of individuals residing, um, that would associate them with a particular disability or anything like that?
Correct. We're not asking for who your individ, who is in your homes, why are they in your homes, just generally what do, what the people in your homes, why are they in your homes, generally? Very, very general about how your homes operate, you know, how many number of people, number, and in the addendum, you know, how many number of people be there? I think in the regular form, it discussed how many potential cars could be there. Uh, again, if we're not talking any specifics about any specific person or, or specific disability that that person has.
Very good. Thank you. Are there other questions of staff on this item? Um, so well, uh, hearing none and no, um, recommended changes or additions to this, David, I think this is probably something that, um, would be ready to, to bring forward to council. I don't know that I feel like we need to have a motion or anything to that effect that I, we're guiding you. I think we're in good shape right here, so. Yes, Teresa?
I have a little bit of community feedback on this, some discussions that I've had with other people in the community. Um, one part of the feedback that we got when we had people in.
Commissioner Woodward, can you turn your mic on?
Okay.
Hey.
So, when we had people in voicing their opinions and concerns, um, one of the concerns was the density of sober homes. And some of the residents did also voice the concern that if there are too many sober homes within close proximity to each other, that it would be detrimental to their treatment. It would bring too much of an element in there that wouldn't be the neighborhood they're trying to acclimate to. So I believe that there, the discussions they're having amongst themselves will probably self-regulate the density. Because it, it can only get to a certain point where they lose that community feel that they're trying to grow back into. Um, so that was one thing that was brought up to me. And another one, I, uh, spoke with a gentleman who is actually considering opening a sober home as part of, um, what he's going to do when he's done with treatment. And I talked about the forms that we were proposing, and he thinks this is a fantastic idea because it would guide him in a direction where there isn't otherwise a guide to help him maneuver through this. So, um, positive community feedback that this is a very good thing that we're doing for these people and for this program.
Thank you, Commissioner Woodward. Other comments or questions on this? Well, David, I think you've got, you've got, uh, direction on that then for the, for the form, um, to present that to city council. There's, um, uh, maybe with the Attorney Langle here, um, so right now, we have, I think, fleshed out, um, managing sober homes in the, within the context of the rental code. And, and I wanted to revisit some of your comments regarding, um, um, management of sober homes within the zoning code. And, and specifically, uh, I, I, I recall a comment about, um, some communities, um, grouping sober homes, um, with similar type uses, uh, and managing them in that way. Um, am I, um, am I characterizing that correctly, or do, did I understand your point correctly on, on that from a zoning code perspective?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so some cities such as Saint Paul, uh, and others discuss sober homes sort of in the same breath, if you will, with other types of residential, um, facilities. When it comes to things like parking, for example, parking regulations, um, those other types of facilities are also regulated in their zoning ordinances, um, in the same manner. So I'm not familiar with Brighter doing that, you know, having regulations for other types of facilities. So that's why so far in this conversation, as I understand it, that really hasn't been brought up, that really hasn't been addressed, if you will. But that is the context, and zoning is, is to, it was primarily a parking thing. And parking and just, uh, perhaps to some extent a density type of issue, but mostly parking. Because of the impact it has in Saint Paul, for example, on off-street, or excuse me, on-street parking, it's, it's a much more dense parking situation in Saint Paul. And, um, they had some serious concerns about the impact of these types of, um, facilities in certain neighborhoods. Because it, it has a ripple effect with, with existing residents and so forth. But that's the context in terms of zoning approach, um, regulations for sober homes that I'm familiar with.
In, in our zoning code, um, we, we put a lot of attention on, um, state-licensed residential facilities and, and the character and the num, the density question. Um, and how that relates to our various residential districts. You know, is, is that an area that the city could consider, um, regulating sober homes? Um, when you, when you look at, it's sort of the definitions of what a state license, clearly it requires a state license, um, you know, so that's in, in the existing code. But, but the types of recovery kinds of facilities, some of them are physical, um, um, recovery kinds of facilities and others are long-term care facilities. Um, so there's a broad spectrum within the state-licensed residential facilities category is. So my question to you is that, is that an avenue of, um, of exploration that the city, um, could consider within the zoning side of, of, of the regulations? You know, um, you know, you know, again, we're currently, our current approach is to look at it from the rental side of things. And, and the zoning side would probably provide more predictability and consistency on how these are handled, probably removes some of the staff considerations of having to, to sort through on an individual basis, whether, whether something's in or out of, uh, a, a special accommodation. If we have dealt with it in that, and more broad definitions of the, the zoning code. Is that an avenue, um, that the city could explore?
Mr. Chair, I think we have to be very careful about going down that road. Licensed residential facilities are protected under state law, um, from discrimination and zoning, and, um, so, so they're handled differently. In terms of trying to impose regulations of some nature concerning sober homes, you run the risk of, um, violations of the Fair Housing Act. Because you're, you're creating regulations specifically relevant to that type of facility, which is exactly what the Fair Housing Act is trying to get municipalities to stop doing or to not do in the first place. They want, or the statute, I should say, is intended to have zoning authorities treat these facilities in the same fashion, to the extent reasonably possible, as a single-family home. And any type of regulation that doesn't do that, that doesn't have some sort of, you know, objective criteria supported by, uh, evidence, such as the parking issue. Now, to the extent regulations still fall within that narrow category, uh, yeah, you're on the risk of having a court say this is spatially discriminatory. There's no reason to be regulating these homes any more than you would regulate any single-family home. Because if you're doing that, then you're specifically going after people with a disability.
Understood. Thank you for your feedback. Any other questions or comments on, uh, sober homes, um, and recommendations that we would put forward to city council? Regarding, again, the task before us, I think, from city council was to say, what is it, um, um, that we can regulate within our existing code? And, and, uh, and bringing, in effect, reporting back to city council on that.
Mr. Chair, um, rather than trying to regulate our way around it, I do see parking coming up as an issue for people that's going to be discussed a lot. What if we added on to the sober home addendum and added the question, is adequate parking available for the number of residents that will be using the facility? And we bring that to the discussion when they apply for this consideration, and we put that at the forefront and say, we're putting this on the, the questionnaire. Just add that question in there so that they can think about it and take note of how many parking spaces are available and how many people will be using them.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Uh, David, I, I think you have a comment or response to that?
Yeah, on that, on the, the first form, the generic form, which, to be clear, if someone came in for a sober home, we'd be asking them to fill out both of these forms, the more generic form and the addendum. So in that form, it does ask how many residents have, will have a vehicle at the site and how many parking spots are available. I think we prefer to do it that way, how many spots are available. If we start putting things out there like, is there sufficient, it's kind of sufficient to whose standard? So this helps even for our perspective, we can go, okay, how many off-street parking spaces are available? If they say two, and then how many residents will have a vehicle and they say eight, well, maybe that kind of triggers a, that, what I would say would trigger that discussion of, okay, where are the other six planning on parking?
Okay.
Again, just that, at this point, there's no regulatory, um, thing we would have on that, but we at least have that, I, we'd be able to have that discussion with the applicant of saying, hey, you know, this is what we've experienced in the past, you know, do you have a plan? And I believe in, in the required documents, we do ask for a parking site plan as well. So that alone, while not necessarily regulating it, telling them you must have these many parking spots, it does get an applicant to think about that point of where am I going to, where, where am I going to have my residents parking?
Thank you, David. And, and, uh, and again, it, uh, you know, that is a, that it's a discussion item with an applicant, um, and, and brings out the opportunity to speak about, you know, um, plowing rules and those sorts of things so that they're forefront, it's in the forefront of that discussion, so. Very good. Other comments or questions? Mr. Erickson?
Just to comment to it, David, I know you'll kind of tee this up and, you know, talk about it with, with council, but I'll chime in too and kind of elucidate and, you know, explain where we're, where our parameters are and the challenge we're running into as far as regulating. So.
Very good.
Add to that discussion. Because I think council will want to, instead of just presenting these two forms, and I know you'll do a good job of teeing that up, uh, but I think they're going to want a little bit more explanation of the road that we've been down, so. Because we've been down a road.
Right, and I think, yeah, and again, it's been, it's been trying to push, push all of the boundaries to ask where are the opportunities? And, and where are the needs? And, and if we see that, if, I, I don't think we've left anything out, let's just put it that way.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that too, the, the parking thing, um, David, you kind of keyed off that, like, the term adequate, and I know Attorney Langle's brought about that, talking about, you have to have that objective criteria supported by evidence. And I think the Saint Paul ordinance, they had done that extensive parking study that would be that objective criteria supported by evidence. So there again, we prodded down that parking issue even, and then that even there, there's kind of challenges to support any kind of regulation, so.
At this time.
At this time, yeah.
And I make, and I can, Mr. Joe, to Mr. Erickson's point there, because I think any recommendation that this commission makes tonight to the council can be also followed up with, you know, if there seem, you know, things come up that seems to be an issue, we can always come back and revisit that. You know, talking about the study that, you look at the study that Saint Paul did again as an example, um, there were events that kind of triggered the council to direct the, the, the Department of Planning and Economic Development to do that study. Um, so I look at it as, you know, if we get to a point where, you know, that we know there's a, there's a neighborhood, we know that there's sober homes over there, and we start hearing things, say, for the streets department saying, you know, it's being real, it's getting really hard to plow out there, there's vehicles all the time. Or we start getting like those kind of consistent comments, those are, I think, definitely things that could then trigger saying, oh, we're, we're hearing cons regularly that there are tangible, like, issues. You know, there's, you know, when they drive through there, you can count, you know, a, a bunch of vehicles, and they all seem to be associated with this property. Um, and we're seeing that again and again and again, that might be, and, and I think Joe can also chime in on that, that could be something that could then trigger doing a study. Because now we have had multiple ti, instances where we can point to, there, there appears to be an issue, and then we can trigger that study saying, yes or no, is, is that issue real or not? I think the question we have now is, is there actually an issue at this time that's, I, I don't know, and Joe can maybe thrust or something more, but significant enough or real enough to trigger issuing some kind of regulations? Obviously, we've had some, um, concerns raised by neighbors. I think the question is, are the potential issues that have been raised, are they currently real? Are they perceived, are they actual or a future, something that might happen? And are those, um, efficient or sufficient enough to trigger doing some, you know, some kind of study to look at regulations? I think that's kind of in a more informal manner, that's what the commission has done so far. I think Joe could chime in too about what it might, what it would look like to, to, um, call for a formal study. Again, looking into Saint Paul, I couldn't find us exactly what led them to do that study, but beyond what was in that study. But clearly, the council saw that there, you know, there seems to be a problem that is brewing, um, and we need to, to research that significantly. Uh, I will point out, if you look at that report, um, I believe it was, the council gave them a direction in two thousand and five, that issue, what, that report wasn't issued until two thousand and eight. So that, that rapport, that twenty-seven-page report took them quite a bit of time to fully research, put together and present to the, the Saint Paul City Council. I don't know if Joe had any other comments and on that matter?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just simply say a couple things. One, you can initiate the, um, the discussion or the, the, uh, research into this anytime you want, for any reason or no reason. And you don't, I don't think you need any kind of a threshold there. It's, what the threshold is, is up to the planning commission, the city council, whether that's one complaint, ten complaints or no complaints, you can certainly begin a study. But any, any study that is done needs to be created or fashioned in a way that is subjective as possible. You're always going to have people who are upset about something, um, and that's not to, you know, belittle their comments or anything, but, uh, in order to be supportable down the road, in the event this ever gets before a court, we just want to make sure that everything is, that the study was created and carried out in a, in a, as obje, as objective manner as possible, so that it is, um, supportable and enforceable going down the road.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're going to move on to new business, item number seven.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, David.
Um, as this was a direction from council, asking you to research and then send a recommendation back, I think it would be prudent that the commission does make some kind of motion to send back to council. Either is it, you know, to adopt these forms and to pursue nothing further, or we kind of, what, what you believe should be the direction moving forward on this topic.
I will, uh, I will accept the motion to that effect. Have a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we proceed with the forms that we've discussed and we take no further action.
Second.
Motion by Gorham, second by Erickson. Any other discussion on that? And again, for, for clarification, our recommendation is that the city staff, if I'm going to interpret your, your, uh, motion, Mr. Gorham, the city staff apply, apply the, um, uh, request for accommodation form and addendum. That, that is, that we've just approved tonight.
Yes.
And that's the extent of our recommendations regarding sober homes to city council. Alright, with that, any other, um, discussion? Alright, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, David. Thank you, Attorney Langle, for your time and guidance on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So new business, item seven, discussion on issuing a letter to MnDOT regarding the proposed Highway two-two-ten improvement projects. So David, you want to, um, queue this up for us, please?
Yeah, so MnDOT, uh, I think it's pretty public knowledge, they are in the, um, process of getting public input regarding the conceptual layout for Highway two-ten. I believe they had a, they had a survey, I believe that actually closed on Monday, um, but they are obviously still receiving input, um, just not, they just formed that, that, that formal public, um, survey process that they were doing. Um, at this point, what they have is issued, and it was in your packet, is they have issued a concept for pretty much the whole corridor. Um, in short, they've split it up into five different sections, being the west side, again, uh, just quickly, an overview again, this project, this is a, is tentatively planned right now for twenty-twenty-five. Full reconstruction of Highway two-ten between Baxter Drive and Pine Shores Road, which is essentially the length of, of two-ten in city limits. And so again, they've broken up to five sections, the first section being Baxter Drive to the river, the second section being the bridge, uh, the third section. uh, the third section being roughly Chippewa to, to, um, Kingwood, where Kingwood kind of turns and hits, hits 210 right after 10th, and then 13th to, uh, 10th Avenue Northeast, so that's, that east, they're calling that kind of the, the railroad, shop section, and then, um, 10th Avenue Northeast to Piney Shores Road, so that kind of, that other tail section. This point, they've issued, they have concepts for each section. Um, every se- section except that 13th Avenue Northeast to 10th Avenue Northeast section pretty much has one concept. And in that 13th avenue's, that, that, that fourth section, what, what they're looking at this time is mainly that light, that intersection at the intersection of 210, uh, Highway 25 and Mill Avenue, County Road 3. Um, what to do with that, um, currently, um, how they rate the efficiency of intersections, they do it a letter, kind of like a grading, um, that intersection rates as an F in efficiency.
Fine, F for fine?
F for failure, I believe. Um, and so it's absolute, it's absolutely a must-go. Um, they've issued, they have three concepts in their plan. The first is pretty much, um, a sticking with the traffic light, but redoing, um, how the traffic flows through that light and how that light operates. And then moving the current signal at 4th Avenue Northeast to 5th Avenue Northeast. Purpose of moving it one street to the east is, there's a lot of traffic that uses 5th Avenue Northeast to access the mall. And so that'd be using the, you actually having people, instead of going through the signal, and then turning over to actually making that intersection, um, controlled. Uh, concept two is a large roundabout at the 8th Avenue Northeast inter- at, at Mill, at that main in, massive intersection. And then they actually would be removing the light at 4th Avenue Northeast. So there would be no light there at all. And then having just a large roundabout, um, they would take off that spur on that, that you can know right now, access if you're going eastbound on, from 210 to Highway 25, they'd take that out. So everything has to go through that roundabout, James has it up on the screen. And also in this, uh, this scenario would also open up, um, an opportunity, if you're going eastbound on 210, that you can currently use that right in, right out into the mall, if you're going westbound, and you'd be actually to be able to turn left there. The roundabout would cause enough gaps, they believe you could also turn a left there. So that would keep a lot of people from turning left at 5th Avenue Northeast, and they could turn left there right into the mall. And then the third concept that they have out there is a double roundabout. This situation, um, what it does is that spur from going up that curve at, at Highway 25 would get stretched out going further towards the west. And what you'd have was, it would have two three-leg roundabouts, um, depending where you like to go. Of how they've presented these options is kind of most, least efficient to most efficient. Um, reconstructing the light, the traffic light, um, would cause an acceptable efficiency of that light, and again, they're doing all, they're doing, doing traffic counts based off of estimated 2045 traffic counts. It would be better than it is now, but not, not the most efficient. The single roundabout would then be, I think they, they said would be like a, a C or a B rating. And then this double roundabout would be, in theory, the most efficient for just moving of vehicles um, option, and that would be an A rating. In general, if you look at across all the segments, what their goals are here, obviously is to move vehicles, but they have a focus on, they are taking into account pedestrians, they're trying to take that account. I think it's something that shows something, um, kind of MnDOT acknowledging pedestrians. Um, historically, they have not, and they're starting, it's a little, but they're starting to do that. What you see on pretty much the entire corridor, I would say east of the bridge, but pretty much most of the entire corridor isn't trying to, they're, they're narrowing up lanes to, to the, the point where that they're the most comfortable. And, but also trying to widen sidewalks. On most of the sections, you only have about a five-foot sidewalk, four. A lot of places, maybe even less in some places, trying to widen those up to at least an eight-foot wherever, wherever possible. In this, and on the, for example, on the bridge, narrowing that large median in between. When it comes to the bridge, they're assuming that the best we're going to get is a redecking. Um, there's a whole separate section of MnDOT that is doing just the bridge, and they haven't determined yet what that will be, but they're not anticipating it'll be a complete reconstruction, as the superstructure for that bridge is quite sound. So they're assuming it's just going to be a redecking, which means you have the 77 feet that exists to work with. So their proposal is shrink that median, then widen the, widen the sidewalks. They've also ident- acknowledged that the bridge is not a fun pedestrian experience. Um, in the section between the bridge, so Chippewa to Central Kingwood, um, what they're, again, trying to widen that, um, widen that up, in effect, hopefully to, to maybe tr- calm traffic, um, putting in a, an actual solid median, the entire corridor, um, with some, uh, left in, lefts out, um, but mostly right in, right outs. And then also in that main area where the businesses are on the north side, taking away that north side on-street parking, to again, used and use that space to widen those sidewalks. Um, so that's really what they're looking at on the pedestrian side, is to just try to widen sidewalks as much as possible. Put in those medians, um, moves, put in those solid medians. That solid median pretty much would serve as the median that's already there, that's striped, that you're technically not supposed to cross, but people cross anyway. Um, so would, there would be a traffic safety aspect to that as well, but from an engineering spec- aspect, that solid median. Whenever you have something that's a barrier, physical barrier, it does slow vehicles down, so I think would also act as a traffic calming. But that in a nutshell is what they are proposing. Uh, and I think what the commission discussed last month was an opportunity to discuss this and, you know, put together some points that you might want to put into a letter from MnDOT, either, you know, in support of this, or as some things that you would like to see, recommendations you would like to make to MnDOT as they're doing their final design and hoping to seek, uh, what they call municipal consent early 2022. Um, once municipal consent is given, that's the kind of the one stick the city holds in this whole process, that the one card is municipal consent, once the city gives municipal consent, it's pretty much, it's all in MnDOT's lap at that point. So at this point, I'll just take any questions potentially that they, that the commission has about the project, otherwise you can, I think, get in discussion about what, what the commission, um, initial thoughts on these proposals are.
Thanks, David, and I think, I think maybe just to, to, to make this focused as much as we can, so it's easy for you to capture the input. I'm, I'm kind of thinking maybe we bring, break the conversation up into like sort of the high-level universal kinds of things that we might want to provide feedback on, and then maybe we can get down to specific items that it got to go or do more of kinds of things, and maybe if we can organize it in that way, so we're not shotgunning a bunch of stuff at you that, that, that you're trying to capture and, and try and put that into the form of a letter. So if that seems reasonable, you know, I wouldn't mind maybe start with the high-level cross-the-board items, Mr. Erickson?
I was going to ask a, kind of a process question too, and I know this was kind of my idea for us to put together this letter. Uh, but I got to thinking too, is this something that we would as planning commission put together and then make a recommendation to city council to then submit? Would that be the appropriate? Now, I'm thinking if this was the DNR, would, would the Parks Department do that? Or I, so, I just, I guess, a process, is this something?
I think this, this can be a letter that is kind of, it is the plan, you know, it would be, this is the planning commission's perspective, I don't know, does it think it needs to be blessed by the council? You know, the council has their own, we can definitely send it to council and say, by the way, this is what the planning commission thinks. But I think the intention, if I'm understanding, would be the idea of, you know, I think as the count liaison from the council, I guess I would almost kind of put that on you, is would you prefer that whatever letter recommendations the commission comes up with, would you prefer it go to council before it gets sent to MnDOT? I guess I kind of refer that to you.
And, and so, as long as, what's the deadline for us to submit this?
I think probably as soon as possible would be best. I know they're still doing some public input, obviously they closed that online survey, I know they're still doing discussions with businesses and such. But I think they're trying to get that, that final design that they'll submit to the city for consent in the next few months, so. Probably the sooner we can get comments to them, the more likely that they'll actually read them, consent, consider them.
I'm just wondering if, you know, if we make recommendations to, to you to put together a letter, if I could maybe just give that update to council prior to, if, will I have that opportunity to update council on, this is what we?
Yeah, I think we could update council on 20th, I don't think I'd have the letter ready to go by the 20th, considering the packet, council packet goes out tomorrow.
That'd be perfect.
But we could shoot to have it in the packet for the October 4 city council meeting.
And I'm comfortable with that too, especially since, as you said, municipal consent, the council will ultimately have that opportunity to say, to weigh in on their own opinions if there are any that differ.
All right, thank you, Mr. Erickson, any other, um, process kinds of questions, or shall we, shall we dive into the, dive into the high-level items?
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to dive in.
Dive in.
I'm really disappointed by this, I, I, I think they, the, the whole focus is on moving people along the highway. And the major problem, if you're a pedestrian or if you're a bicyclist, and if you're a town that's trying to build, you know, coherent, complete neighborhoods, is this road is a barrier right down the middle of the road. And all the considerations are about moving the vehicles along the road, I don't see a single consideration, you can correct me if I'm wrong, about moving people across the road, I see nothing. I see nothing to address the eight-block stretch between 4th Street, um, North 4th Street and Northwest 4th Street. I see nothing to make it safer for people to cross the street, nothing. So I'm disappointed, but that's my, that's my high-level analysis.
So it's ab- it's lacking specificity on how, how we're moving people across the thoroughfare, whether that's signals or whether that's, however.
They don't address any light signals on the stretch.
Nothing.
From, uh, I, I guess I agree with, uh, Commissioner Goram on, on, on the crossing the roads, and as a cyclist, I don't care too much about bike lanes along 210, I think there's really good, well-defined corridors on either side of 210, but just something to get across that would be better, um, for cycling as well, because it's kind of just going, picking one of those cross-streets and, and going across, um, we've got some nice trails going up, you know, to 4th. But yeah, other than that, I just kind of have the same thoughts about, uh, safety and crossing, and also hoping that the timing on a couple of those lights would, would, uh, improve. Like the light down by College Square is so responsive, I love that light, um, all the ones along the 210 corridor are just, are just awful. They're just there forever.
Ms. Woodward?
I had the opportunity to talk with the two gentlemen who did the presentations for business members, uh, community business owners, and they have not seen our comprehensive plan, they haven't seen our future land use map, they're interested in getting that information as soon as possible, so that they can can take a look at it and see what we're actually looking for, and I think that they are open to taking that into consideration, and if we our goal has been to design a community that people want to live in, not something they want to drive through as fast as possible. And they are open to looking at those plans, looking at what we've come up with for design aspects, things like that, and they're open to looking at those things and helping us achieve our goals.
Good to hear. Other comments on high level? I would, um, I, I have a general concern about, right-turn-only side streets, or, or intersecting streets, only of the north-south streets are right-turn-only in many of these intersections, which is going to put some increased traffic, so Kingwood is probably going to see, um, more traffic going east-west to, that normally, or at least under the current conditions, is kind of spitting out in these focused areas, so we will pop out on, uh, that'd be what, 4th, um, a few others, a few other spots along the way, so we're, we're doing, in effect, as we're using Kingwood now as a, as a conduit, it's, it's, it's probably already rated that way, um, Paul Sandy would probably be able to speak to how that, that road is currently, um, classified as a collector, but, um, so I, I, I think that evaluation of what the impacts are to the right only on, on what that's going to do pushing, pushing more vehicle traffic along those major, there, um, those, those, that next, um, road off the, off of 210. And there's a lot of, around the Taco, Taco John's and Jimmy John's and stuff, there's a lot of traffic that actually goes in the alleys as well. And as we start to shut down, uh, some of the intersections on some of these designs, we may end, end up encouraging a lot of alley traffic and things going in places you wouldn't want it to go or intend to go.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If I may, um, we actually had, uh, received some communication about a week ago from a, from a gentleman, uh, his name is Jamie Beazer, he's an architect, design, architectural designer with Woodseth, um, and he actually just copied me on an email he had sent to Luke Wesler, who is the project lead for MnDOT District 3 on this. And I think he covered a lot of what I think the commission has discussed right now, and I thought it'd be interesting for you to hear what even this gentleman has said. He said, um, to Luke, he said, "I had the privilege of attending the Highway 210 online presentation the other day, even including a few multimodal transit resources in the chat. Today, I'd like to follow up with additional thoughts and comments for your consideration," and I must only give you a specific some of what he said here, "So the graphic, the graphic data analysis created to illustrate the community surveys are powerful and beautiful created document highlighting the primary interest for the, for the project. Specifically, I'd like to consider the portion of the document, an offer point of view, current design concepts are doing a great job at taking the data at face value, continuing to prioritize vehicle, um, solutions." Um, he said, "During the design phase, we got a timely opportunity to create a real path forward that is aligned with the vision statement and guiding principles created in the 2019 comprehensive plan. Creating options for multi-world transportation is of value, which I believe strongly fits with our city's vision, while also aligning the explosion of cycling popularity due to the unit trails. The data provided in the survey is a snapshot representing our residents' impression of the city as it exists, as they are currently familiar with it." Um, and this is the piece I think, I think is, is an interesting how he pointed out, "As professional designers, I believe we are missing an opportunity to showcase a wider variety of solutions so the ra- so that residents are able to envision their city with new potential." And he, I highlights two portions of the survey, he said, "This is a key concept that is missing for the designs, design studies. Our residents have had no opportunity to see what could be. Our environments are the results of deliberate and thoughtful design, this is an opportunity to design the city we enjoy living in." And then he, and, and I'll leave it there, that's what, you know, I, I found it interesting how he's saying, um, you know, we looked at the road and it's a road, it's meant for moving cars, and so we're just going to keep designing moving cars and add some things, and I like how he brought out that, you know, here's what it, what it could, what, you know, have you ever asked us, what, what could it be? Not what should it be, or what we think it should be, but what, just kind of what, hypothetically, what could we make this? Um, and I feel like that's a little bit of what I've heard from the commission, is we haven't had that piece.
Thank you, David, who was that, uh, from again, please?
His name was, uh, Jamie Beazer, he's with Woodseth.
Okay, thank you. You know, again, that, improving the efficiency and flow of traffic, um, really, um, becomes the conflict with pedestrians and bikes, and that's getting across, and the more, the more you're whipping those things through, when the more you unclog that traffic light at Mill Avenue, you know, the faster stuff's coming into town at that point, so, um, that's, that, that will be a challenge for us to have to, to, to deal with under the current design options that we're seeing, no question about it. Are there any other, um, high-level kinds of issues that folks see that they'd like to put on the?
I have a few more.
Yeah.
210 stretches a very long distance and goes through a lot of other small towns, a lot of other places. Brainerd is not the only spot where traffic- Brainerd is not the only spot where traffic stops to accommodate life in a town. And I think it's unreasonable to expect traffic to be able to move faster and uninhibited through Brainerd so that people can bypass our city without having to stop or be able to expedite traffic through at the expense of our business owners who are trying to get people to stop into their businesses. So I think where I'm going with some of this is that perhaps faster isn't better. That slowing things down might be, it's, it's the exact opposite of what a lot of plans have been. But if we approach the design of this new highway as more of a boulevard and community asset, rather than a straight to expedite transportation, it becomes an asset to the businesses that are along there that are more easily accessible on a boulevard-style traffic pattern than on a major state highway thoroughfare. With your left-hand turn, um, considerations that you brought up, there, there are a lot of businesses that would probably see decreased traffic. And the idea of eliminating some of the left-hand turn lanes is so that traffic can move forward more, more safely. What they're not anticipating is the number of people who have lived here for five, six decades and always been able to turn into that business that they've always gone to. When they redid the traffic light by the water tower, there were, there were cars backed up and backed up and backed up that couldn't make a left-hand turn. And I bet it took ten years for people to stop trying to turn there. We're not going to fix traffic congestion, eliminating left-hand turn lanes because all of those cars will still stop to try and turn, and then they will have to go over a lane, make a right-hand turn, turn around, come back, and then, so they're, they're trying to redirect traffic into places where you can make a U, a U-turn and then make a right-hand turn to try and solve that. But it's gonna take at least a decade to retrain most of the traffic. Where on a slower boulevard style, dropping speed limits down, making safe left-hand turns into these businesses, the business owners who have invested decades into their businesses will be much happier with the accessibility to their businesses, having them accessible from both directions. And it's, I don't want to see a decrease in business value or a decrease in property value because the infrastructure was improperly planned. I think on a whole, as a major level, it's worth considering a design aspect as a boulevard rather than as a thoroughfare.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. And I, and I believe Mr. Gorman has a, a possible model of a boulevard of Washington Street that his dad took from the water towers.
Well, yeah, there, there was a boulevard. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I have to go back.
Here's what it could look like again.
They had trees. It was great.
Trees would be great.
Yeah.
Other high level items?
I agree with a lot of what I've heard about the emphasis on thoroughfare aspect. I think that's what this, these proposals are focused on, as opposed to crossing two ten. And I like the comment about, and it sounds like they might be open to, you know, looking at this more through the comprehensive plan. I just pulled that up, you know, balance the competing needs of safety and local traffic, bicycle and pedestrian, and ensure the efficient transfer of freight, you know. So I mean, that, that right there, I mean, we have to, I think this proposal is just out of balance with one-sided. As we've mentioned, we've all kind of noticed. So it, it sounds like they're open to re, kind of considering that and that they're looking for feedback. So I think if we refer them back to what we've got in the conference plan as a starting point. And then, I know we're keeping this high level, but obviously we'll get more into specifics. But as a starting point, I think there's a lot of good things there in the comp plan that speak to the things that we're talking about as far as connecting the different neighborhoods of the community, um, all the walk, bike, ped things that we're talking about. So that two ten's not a barrier at, to the degree possible.
I'd also like to point out that they ran their models for twenty forty-five traffic on an algorithm that calculates the, the traffic flows from years past, traffic studies in years past, predictions coming forward. But that algorithm is meant to predict the increase, and it doesn't take into account a lot of major events like when we have a pandemic hit and major companies like Acesis, for an example, shift to work at home. That was a huge amount of traffic going through one of those intersections. There's, there is a change in commute traffic. There is a change in school traffic. There could be monumental changes in our traffic patterns between now and twenty forty-five. And assuming that we're going to have this catastrophic amount of traffic flowing through these intersections in twenty forty-five might be unrealistic. What we might need to scale for is the preservation of the businesses along that street rather than the expedition of traffic. So.
Ms. Erickson.
Also add to, thanks for your comments on the left turn. That kind of helped me. Cause I was thinking about, actually, I've heard from a resident, uh, suggestion of where to eliminate a left turn. And it's kind of consisted with one of the things in the proposal. So, and I know we're keeping this high level. So I think there's a discussion to be had there. I'm, you know, I think your comments have kind of helped, helped me look at that in a little bit of a different light. But I was gonna mention that, too. I've had some feedback about, about a potential area to limit a left turn. We'll get into more of that, too.
Not sure if it's high level or if I'm getting more nitty-gritty. I, I have a lot of opinions on this. But we've also heard some really good community feedback from people on roundabouts and adding them in on a major thoroughfare. And roundabouts function in a certain way, and they function efficiently. And their traffic analysis, their traffic patterns, their projections, all rate this according to the proper function of a roundabout. We have a longstanding funeral home that's been in business for quite a while. And they're right on the corner of one of these spots that would be impacted. If you take something like a funeral procession through one of these intersections, you have to shut down the intersection. When you shut down even one portion of a roundabout, the entire intersection fails. That backs up traffic. You get fifty, sometimes even a hundred cars that go through one of those funeral processions. That backs it up for a while. You're talking about possibly a fifteen to twenty-minute clear-out time before you have the intersection working again. They've also, the way that they design these roundabouts for truck traffic is that the trucks can't navigate the turns the same way a car can. We all know that. So they flatten the curb so that the truck can rise up over that and cut the corner. And everybody else is gonna do that, too. Even with the way that they've designed them on College Drive, you still see plenty of people starting off in one lane, going straight through the intersection. And if you look at the wear on the lines, that is where the traffic goes. If you look at, I don't remember the technical term for it, but there is now a term for identifying traffic patterns in, on snow-covered streets. I don't remember what it is. But if you look at a snow-covered street that has not been plowed and you see where the tire tracks go, you identify the traffic patterns of where people are actually driving, where their habits have actually led them to drive. And you see them going up over the, the medians. You see them turning where they want to turn. You see that people drive in more narrow spaces than what we allow. And I think it's, it's interesting to look at the actual use of roundabouts and corners as opposed to what's marked and what's perceived as this is what's going to function. It doesn't always function like that.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. If we've got roundabouts as our theme, maybe we could, um, maybe dive in a little bit on that. The example that's up here now is the, the entrance to that roundabout from Eighth Avenue, Mill Avenue is a single lane. And if, if you think about fishing openers or, or resort, resort turnovers, major holidays, that, that's a real difficult spot, even with two lanes in there right now, allowing straight and, and straight and left turns and then a right turn lane. It still backs up considerably, even the improvements on Mill Avenue or the so-called improvements to Mill Avenue. I, I, I'm skeptical that one lane is gonna be sufficient to keep Mill Avenue from, from stacking real badly, particularly if people are moving with speed and with, with, um, with efficiency on two ten. They're gonna be cranking into that roundabout and, and it'll be challenging to find your space to enter into the roundabout from Mill Avenue. That's, that, that to me strikes me as a problem. And then the, and then the pedestrian basematic of the, the two-bladed, um, lender there for pedestrians, when you have both of those, I, those are hard for pedestrians to cross. It's hard to do at College Avenue. It's hard to do at the new one on, on Northwest Fourth. To be able to get into there with the cars wanting to make the roundabout and continue their speed and get on their way. You know, so signals or some way to interrupt the flow of traffic for pedestrians and cyclists. This one brings a trail from twenty-five on up in, but it brings it, I'm trying to think if it brings it on the left-hand side, and then you gotta cross over the intersection to the south of two ten and then navigate around again. It's a little bit of a nightmare for, you're bringing people to that point.
Instead of one traffic signal crossing where you cross at the light, there are three interruptions to go across. And that's three separate points where you're clogging up pedestrian traffic, waiting for cars to pass. And then there being a, you have to wait for a long enough space because not everybody stops at a crosswalk, especially in a roundabout when they're already worried about the yield signs.
Other reflections on, on Mr. Erickson?
Am I looking at that right? Is that the gray, the light gray? Is that the trail? Okay. So I'll just add to, I'm zoomed in here on my computer on what we're seeing at the screen. But you're right, there's three interruptions there, and that just gets you to this side, and then you have to cross over. If you're gonna continue on to like the future, tell you in the trail. So then you have to cross over, then cross over Mill. So it's three and then four, well, five.
There would be, yeah. There could be six to make that intersection.
Six disruptions from that trail.
A group of bicyclists. And how many have been out in a group of bicyclists where you have twenty people in your group? I see them go down the, I see them go down Laurel Street on a regular basis. There's, and they're using the side streets, and they're properly using the traffic signals as though they're vehicles. And that functions a lot better than having six interruptions and trying to move that many people through when there's no traffic control that favors pedestrians.
Other thoughts on, on this? Yeah, please, ma'am.
I drive this intersection every single day. I live up north off Mill. And when I saw one roundabout, I chuckled, and then I saw two roundabouts and I kind of laughed. So, um, to be completely honest. Cause I've seen when it's been on like a Sunday afternoon, you got cabin traffic going south, and on a Friday afternoon, and cabin traffic's going north, and we, I know the little back routes back there, and we avoid that intersection at all costs. So, and plus semis. I was thinking about that because there's a lot that go through there. So, yeah, a roundabout, I just couldn't, in my mind, I couldn't picture it. Although when David ran through, like, it was least efficient with the, the new light, and then it got more efficient with one, and then the most efficient with two roundabouts. That made me rethink it. And then our conversation here, I just, it's, I guess the numbers and then our minds aren't matching up. Like, I can't picture it.
Mm-hmm. And I think I will point, and I'll just say that, too, you know, again, when we're talking about efficiency, they were, you know, very specifically efficiency for vehicles. Not necessarily efficiency for, for pedestrians. You know, from, from MinDOT's perspective to, um, talking about vehicle speeds and stuff, you know, in, I would say in theory, you know, someone's not gonna take this roundabout at forty-five miles an hour. You're gonna have to slow down to get to it. And maybe during the day, like, you know, I, I, I can guarantee that if it goes in, the, I'll be hearing stories from the police department of someone at, you know, ten o'clock at night who decided to go through the thing at seventy-five miles an hour. But yes, it's efficient. Is it efficient for vehicles? Yes. I think definitely the commission has some valid points where it's, is it efficient for, for pedestrians? Absolutely, probably not.
Chair.
Erickson.
So, you know, I'm looking at this again. Thanks for zooming that up a little bit. I'm not necessarily opposed to the roundabout, but when we tie in that trail, are, you know, why do we have the trail going right in there? Are we able to, to me, I'm looking at this, if we're able to cross that trail over and have it go up tenth and just, you know, detangle that trail, then we don't have to worry about all these interruptions. Um, cause I mean, I, I do see the benefit of perhaps the roundabout being efficient at that intersection. Mr. Chair, I see your point about, especially on north, uh, north on Eighth Avenue, uh, the stacking issue. But I, it just doesn't make sense for me, to me, to have that trail going tangled up in that, that roundabout. If there's a better way, we can get that, that trail. There's probably a reason why it's going there, but.
And, and I can kind of speak to that, Mr. Chair. There's a reason that I think they have that trail planned there is because that's the planned route for the Kuyun Lake State Trail Extension, to run it down twenty-five. Kind of, it's gonna snake down two ten, probably the north side of two ten eventually, cut down here at twenty-five, go across the railroad bridge, and then down twenty-eighth. And the city's currently working with Mr. Higgins to then bring it over through the NP Center and then down thirteenth. Um, so that's kind of why I think it's at that location.
And I understand that, but to bring it then back to that, you, cause then we're coming underneath through the, kind of the wetlands there, up twenty-eighth, and then we come back to that intersection. If we can, if we can do all of that but avoid that intersection, I think that would help a lot. Then we can kind of have the best of both worlds, have that flow through and have a a more focused bike and ped crossing.
Mr. Chair, I'm just gonna add that now that we're gonna have these proposed ten-foot sidewalks, wouldn't that be a great place to have the trail run along the sidewalk and actually move people right through town on a major thoroughfare?
Right.
That's my thought.
Are there any, um, uh, specific gotta-go items in any other of the zones that folks have seen that we might wanna weigh in on?
Mr. Chair, if I can just make a comment?
Yes.
I know we've been talking a lot about moving of pedestrians here. I think in the past, the commission's also made comment, especially when it comes to the zoning code, about facade and just visual. With that, just let you know that, not that MinDOT doesn't have that in mind, but really when it comes to any of those kind of improvements, um, the city is absolutely looking and having, being plans for that. But those are on the city. MinDOT will pay for five percent of whatever the city chooses to do for facade, being lighting or, or, you know, like fancy light poles or whatever it is, they will do five percent. And then the rest of it is, is on the city. So I think the council, from that perspective, would definitely appreciate, and Commissioner Erickson, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think would appreciate the input from the council, um, from this commission on, on things like lighting and what, you know, as we talk about this being a gateway, what that should look like. But those are costs that will directly be borne by the city.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes, Ms. Woodward.
Tag onto that. Um, one of the other kind of macro perspectives that I wanted to tag on there is in this, we're looking at the former Acesis, former Kmart building, um, in there. And that is, that has become a very blighted property. And I think the number of blighted properties that we have along there detracts from the value of our city. It detracts from the value of other people's properties. And I think the accessibility to some of these needs to be a big consideration and a much bigger. And I think the accessibility to some of these needs to be a big consideration and a much bigger consideration than it has been. Right now, there is actually a developer looking at putting something in there, but it's consi- it's contingent on the way that this development goes forward. And if it doesn't go a certain way, we lose the developments coming in and fixing some of these properties. And if we develop this road and we ask for a plan that is city-friendly, it will become friendly to those properties and we will see some of this blight cleaned up and some of these properties redeveloped and additional revenue coming into our city.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know that I just got, received an email from City Engineer Paul Sandy. He's actually watching our, our discussion right now. And he actually, I just want to let you know that he, he is offering that, um, if, if the commission would like reaching out to MinDOT and having them at a future meeting, actually come maybe the October meeting, come and have this discussion with you. Um, obviously we're having a discussion now, which I think is great to kind of get some of these initial thoughts out. We can give them to MinDOT and then we can have Luke and Chris, who's with S H, maybe even come to that meeting and have that discussion with, have a discussion with you of, you know, we can send them, you know, the notes we've made so far, but here's some of these issues. And then on that meeting, they can come and maybe just talk to, talk to those concerns, talk to kind of again, why specifically from their mouths, they're, they are recommending these and how potentially these concerns may or may not be addressed with their plan. So if that's something the commission would be, would like to do, I can definitely work with Paul and we can get Luke and Chris here to kind of have that conversation with you, probably as early as next month.
And I, I think that would be a welcomed opportunity and again, sort of, sort of the primer of, of what that conversation would be, could be the comments that we assemble here to, to forward on. So there's, uh, so what you, you've put forward the question of, um, you know, uh, the kinds of aesthetic improvements, if you would, along the corridor that could be cost shared. And that would be with with the, um, business owners, I'm presuming, or is that the city, uh, is, is the, how does that work?
So I, I don't think we've gotten to that stage yet. I don't I hesitate to say this, say this without, you know, Paul being here, but I don't think the intent at this time would be to assess those costs. Um, I think the intent would be that the city would just budget for those costs. I mean, that's, that's been the discussion, would kind of put it in the capital plan to budget for those costs. Obviously, and, and again, some of those are still kind of up, up in the air. We had a, a meeting regarding lighting, kind of a general meeting kind of lighting with BPU, Paul and I and Jennifer and and at, at this time, um, it appears that MinDOT is going to allow BPU to do the lighting on two-ten, which should be, I think, our preferred because then we have that control. But, you know, they were, they were satisfied with what BPU did on South Sixth. At this time, MinDOT hasn't necessarily, to my knowledge, hasn't committed that, yes, BPU can, you can do the lighting. Any lighting that they do on two-ten has to be approved by MinDOT. But yes, so right now that's the goal and that's what they're planning for is that BPU will do and do the lighting. And pretty much where they're coming from is tell us, you know, city, tell us what you want put there. And then it's just coming, it's just coming into budgeting. Having that discussion of how many lights, where are the lights, what do they look like? And then picking up a cost to that and then putting it in there. But I think right now the plan is to just put it as part of the city's general budget and not necessarily assessing that cost to businesses or properties.
What's, what's, thank you. And what's challenging here, um, is, is the, the other associated design items like landscaping, like stormwater and how we would manage those. If we're going to manage it as an entire hardscape, then that means we're, we're slicking water off in high volumes. It's going to wash out around Bridge Abutments at the, at, at the river and so on and so forth. How are we, how are we managing that? Where does, where does the stormwater go? Do we, do we lose some of our existing, um, either open space or, or, um, buildings and such to stormwater management and, and ponds? Or is that going to be managed someplace else?
And I think that's a also a discussion we can have with Engineer Sandy. Um, I do know that as part of this project, there are significant utilities. They are going to be doing some significant utility um, work as well as we do have major lines that move underneath two-ten and their intention, the, you know, and your Sandy and BPU would be to do, uh, some significant work while the road is ripped up because this is a once-in-generation thing that they're going to go in and also be working on that. So I'm assuming that be, they'd be looking at addressing stormwater and things like that in, in those utility improvements as well. We've already, you know, from a staff level, kind of, even with council kind of throwing out the, out there, I think everyone would prefer some landscaping, some greenery on two-ten. I think the question is, is the, um, is the how? Um, especially when you look at the same issue we kind of even have on South Sixth, you saw that first year, those boulevards looked really nice and that second year they looked like crap. And a lot of this comes from, MinDOT has a twenty-four-hour dry policy. So what, you know, their pol- that's policy is, is twenty-four hours after a snow event, that road needs to be dry. So they put everything on that road to make that happen. And what that happens is it kills everything within, you know. Wherever they throw snow, all that chemical goes and it kills everything in there. So how do we do that in a way that makes it, A, look nice, but also doesn't result in us having to like replant boulevards every summer? That's the, I know that's a balance that I think we're still even now working through is how do we make that work? You know, does that mean that we're just going to put turf everywhere? You know, that doesn't have to, then it looks green and I know you repaint it every few years or what, what does that look like? I think if even from council, there's definitely desire to soften up two-ten and make it much more visually friendly.
Mr. Erickson.
Yeah, I was just going to say just that. I know there's at least some, um, appetite on council to make aesthetic improvements, lighting, landscaping, uh, streetscaping. To what degree, you know, yet to be seen, but I do know that there's an appetite, at least some.
And I will also say, Mr. Chair, even the, the, the HRA is also keeping an eye on this. Um, they're going to be some work, they're be working on it in twenty-twenty-three submitting for a small cities grant. Um, that would be in that, in that project area would be the two-ten corridor. It'd be a commercial grant, um, that would start in twenty-twenty-five to again, I know, I think one of the things that we as the city and the HRA and other entities, EDA, are focusing on too, is this is also a great opportunity in twenty-twenty-five while the road is ripped up and there is going to be that major interruption for significant amount of time. You know, is this an opportunity for some of the businesses and properties along two-ten to do some improvements and can we create, um, come up with funds or such things to facilitate and encourage those improvements at that time?
Thank you. Other, um, comments or points that, uh, members would like to have, um, Director Chansky put into a letter?
Uh, to belabor this, last thing I'll say about the trail, if I could go back to that. There could be a safe routes to school case to be made about going up Tenth Avenue with ECFE being located right there as well. Run that trail right by that school, granted there. Very young children.
Commissioner Erickson, if I'm, is the next safe routes, it's twenty-twenty-four, right? Cycle?
Uh, planning?
Yeah.
Would be for planning, but for infrastructure.
Which we always can always, I believe.
Yeah.
We can always prepay and then get it back, but yeah.
And I think currently under this, um, this proposal there, the left, left turn from eastbound is, uh, on Tenth is, is proposed to be eliminated?
Yes. So it'd be if you're going, if you're going north on Tenth, you can do a right out. Um, depending on which proposal you're looking at, I think the, if you're going westbound, I think there's, their intention is you can turn left on, going on to Tenth Avenue if you're going westbound. Um, but if you are on Tenth Avenue, you can't turn left on to, to ten. You, the idea was try to push you to the roundabout.
So, so a, an eastbound two-ten can turn left on to Tenth Avenue? Is that what you're saying? But if you're coming, you cannot cross north-south on Tenth Avenue?
There, I think what they said there, right now, I think they say they, they listed as not. They are considering allowing cross-traffic. The concern again is I think they don't really want tenth north at traffic that's going north on Tenth Avenue, they're, they're hesitant about allowing that to turn left onto two-ten right before the roundabout. I think their preference, their, MinDOT's preference would be to force you down to like twenty-five and then come up to the roundabout that direction if you want to continue westbound.
So I'm just trying, I'm trying to reconcile your, your comment about how to bring the trail across and I'm thinking that what, what I'm hearing and I, I think maybe I'm not understanding correctly is to, is to maybe come up Tenth and cross over there um, with the trail. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah.
And it would seem, it would appear to be in conflict with, with the graphic that's on screen right now that basically has that, that closed off. Or is that, or am I misreading the symbol?
I'm just.
Slow down for traffic there?
Trying to, I'm just trying to disentangle that trail from that roundabout.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, you know, getting it up Tenth Avenue. You know, you're still going to have to have a crossing. So, I mean, that would have to be modified, uh, with the inability to take a left off of Tenth Avenue as you're heading north onto two-ten. That would reduce conflict. Um, and then my comment about safe routes, I, not necessarily for a safe routes grant, but I guess whoever we need to talk to, you know, about the Cayuna, like re-changing that route. You could make the case that, hey, there's a modification that may be in order. And by making that modification, you'd be bringing it by, by a school would help support that argument. So, and I think you were talking about a funding cycle. So I wasn't necessarily talking about the funding cycle, but helping to strengthen the case to, to moving it. Any other thoughts on that or?
I'm of the opinion that when there's too many problems, that that makes it the wrong concept. And if there's, there's no way to safely expand our bike trails, we're really looking to bring a lot of people in with that method of travel. And we want to be able to safely expand that method of travel. And a roundabout may not allow for that.
And these are all elements, Mr. Chair, that I'll definitely, I think at this point, um, especially with Engineer Sandy's offer to have Luke and Chris come to speak to you, we can consolidate pretty much the notes I've made from your comments. And then to, to give to them in advance and say, you know, this is, they discussed, the commission discussed in September, these are their initial comments to the, the, the concepts that you guys put out there. And pretty much they would like you to, um, really speak to, you know, high-level, you know, what is MinDOT's goal first of all, so they can understand, you know, you can understand MinDOT's goal. And also can you speak to some of these concerns that they have in ways that MinDOT might be able to mitigate them?
Since we're talking about this, um, I see with that option, what is it, one with the roundabout, with the single roundabout, they, they just simply eliminate the light at fourth?
Yes, because they, they simply eliminated it, um, and they extend the, again, their plan again is that solid median. So they extend it through there. And what they do is they, I think they still allow for a left turn on the fifth. And what they did is they extend this, that left turn lane pretty much almost all the way to fourth. So they add, they extend left turn lane on fourth and they also add that left turn option to that entrance, um, right before, to the mall right before the roundabout. So they kind of add.
Mr. Chair, then.
Yes, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you. Then with, I guess regardless of the option, maybe a thought would be to not have the trail come up either Tenth Avenue or, um, is it still twenty-five there up to the roundabout, but have it come back to fifth or fourth? Cause you'd have, obviously be on MinDOT right-of-way. And you'd avoid, whether it's an intersection, a roundabout or what have you. Maybe a, a safer intersection.
They tend to do that on option three, but it doesn't go all the way.
And I think Engineer Sandy can also speak to that and he'll be here that night as well. Or I'll plan on having him be, him be there as well. He's been the one, primarily, he's been the one working with S H, he's been doing a lot of the design for that trail segment. He's the one who's been working with them and then they've been communicating with MinDOT. So I think he can also speak to kind of all the concepts when it comes to specifically the trail that has been thought through so far and then how they might interact with this improvement project.
Last thing I'll say is particularly with that option where they have the crossing at fifth, that would be a, to me, the ideal spot for that crossing. Then you'd avoid that big intersection. But I'll leave it at that.
So, um, so kind of the high-level things that I'm hearing, um, specifically getting down to the pedestrians and cyclists, getting across two-ten, I, I think we need to hear more of the thoughts from MinDOT on that. I, you know, I, I'm not sure how to approach the comp plan piece. Do we want to, do we want to present sections of the comp plan and have them address how they would try and address those and make the, make this harmonious with our comprehensive plan or do we want to have them study the comp plan and come back to us? I, I'm, I'm a little, I'm feeling like we might want to feed them, I think, sections of our comp plan and say, how do you, how do you make this, um, compatible? Mr. Erickson, you?
Suggestion, I, I would say maybe we make recommendations about emphasizing crossings to connect these different neighborhoods and we, we make those recommendations and couch them in here, and it's supported by our comprehensive plan here, here and here. Uh, that way we're kind of giving that feedback and then saying this is where it's coming from.
These are the things that we need.
Yeah.
In our community.
And that's supported by the comp plan. Here's.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with that comment. I think, I don't know if they're going to, Luke and Chris are necessarily going to sit there and read through our comp plan. I think we say here, you know, here are the situat- here, here's our concerns and then using our con- our, our comp plan, this is why they are concerned. Because our, because our goals are X, Y, and Z.
And then there's the, um, um, sort of the business impacts. That are coming from two different directions. One is removing the on-street parking option on two-ten will have, so does our on-street or side-street capacity s- satisfy that need? It probably does, but it would be important to look at that and and, and maybe places that have high usage or, or high volume of, um, on-street parking, you know, high turnover or, or long-term parking there. We might want to, we might want to think about, are there, are there options there available on the side streets or or does, uh, MinDOT have to help us think about how we accommodate that parking on the side streets?
And I'll just say this, Mr. Chair, on that too, and you'll probably hear it from MinDOT when they come as well. One of their biggest, you know, and they've, they, they've acknowledged the issue, the concerns with, you know, the parking and they did some parking studies and to, or counts. I think their biggest thing is that, that, what is it, sixty-seven feet? I don't remember how big that right-of-way is. Is that seventy feet of right-of-way? Their plan in this is they do not have any plan for right-of-way acquisition.
Right.
There may be a few situations where it might, some small spots where it might be necessary. But that's what they're trying to figure out is, was the, you know, using the existing right-of-way, what can we do? So that's what they're kind of balancing. Is it the parking or is it widening sidewalks? Can't necessarily do both. And if it's the sidewalks, then yes, what do we do with the parking and is it sufficient? But that's, I think, kind of where, what they, what they had to balance was, is it parking on the north side or is it wire sidewalks?
And then, and then the other business impact was regarding the left turns.
Correct.
Being able to, you're, you're eliminating a number of left turns, not all of them. Where you put them is going to be pretty, pretty critical. You know, preserving the left turn on North Second seems pretty smart because that's like how you get to the hospital with an ambulance to the emergency room. And that's a wide street. It's designed to expedite uh, traffic. That one, you know, so that's just the eyes-open things that, uh, you know. Uh traffic, that one, you know, so that's just the eyes-open things that, you know, having the MinDOT folks here to 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 maybe. Get closer look at the nuances of how our streets work. Um so those are, and and then and then um some discussion around the trail trail crossing, that just seems to me like the the four big items that I've heard. Come out of, the high-level items that I've heard come out of here. And and those themes are gonna carry across each of these segments. In the in the plan, so I think maybe we work on that, but Mr. Erickson's gonna 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 clarify or?
No, no clarification, I just wanted to add one more thing on the left turn, the comment that was made to me had to do with. Uh First Avenue Northeast and the turn lane. Be the westbound turn lane on two ten as you're turning south onto Thirteenth Street. That gets stacked up pretty good, as we all know, and and maybe it's in there and I missed it, but. Um the suggestion that was made to me by a resident was that that left turn lane be eliminated to allow that Thirteenth Street. Turn lane to be extended further back.
And that's, yeah, and that's in the design that they're pretty much gonna remove the left turns on second.
Okay, so.
And then possibly third, but at least second, they definitely are aware that that's a bad left turn. And so they're going to, that westbound left turn on the thirteenth absolutely extend that lane.
Okay.
And that's, then that makes capacity a gillus is what you're saying, and thirteenth, yeah.
However, your comments may have a different perspective on that, which, uh cuz again, there's businesses all in there, so.
I use the left-hand turn on to First Avenue every day.
There you go.
That's my way home, but losing that turn to stop the backup of traffic at that stoplight. Is a small concession because really, I mean, that intersection needs to be a safe crossing point. We need to be able to fit semi trucks in there to be able to service the businesses, we need, you know. Maybe there's events at the NP Center that need a bigger turn lane at that stoplight. So it's really.
Are you gonna use the railroad spur? That's the other piece that goes across there in effect and.
Yeah, they actually removed the.
They took the road big for across two ten, but.
Yeah.
So I guess, to me, that one, that left, removing that left makes sense unless I can hear more from you.
So have we ac- adequately captured the high-level, high-level items and David, could you?
I think I've got all those notes here and we'll, I'll package those.
Anchor them to the comp plan and.
Yep, and we'll send that to MinDOT at a at a request for them to kind of consider these comments and then address them. Um when they come and speak to you.
Mr. Chair, I have a micro comment that uh might. Most people might be in agreement with, the Washington and South Sixth Street intersection by the Water Tower was redone to accommodate. The traffic levels going north and south on three seventy-one. Since that intersection was redone, there has been a bypass put in, there is significantly reduced traffic in that intersection. And I have heard from multiple people and myself that it would be nice to have that restored to a regular intersection, it would provide. Adequate traffic. Patterns to Sawmill Inn, to the churches, to Gregory Park events. And the way they're laying out with restricted left-hand turn lanes, opening up that intersection would be great. Otherwise, we've only got fourth and eighth, trying to get back to Gregory Park, to all of the churches, just, it's. If there's only two points of contact where you can turn through there, it's, it kind of seems asinine not to open. The South Sixth and Washington intersection back up to be a normal intersection again. It would also be nice for bike traffic coming through to downtown.
Well, it'd be a controlled intersection which would facilitate.
Yeah, cuz they're still going to have a stoplight there and that's a nice controlled crossing. But it would also be nice to put a little more priority on traffic going through there. It it got blocked off for what was deemed a very good reason then, it's not a good reason now, it could go back to being a regular intersection.
And that would, and that would fall in Paul's world, would it not?
Correct.
Cuz that that's, that would be our choice.
That'd be our choice, correct. The city's choice.
So that would be just, again, at at that opportunity to fix other things while this is going on, that's an opportunity. That we can do on the on the same same time while the while the pavement's ripped up and. The grades are there. All right, any last comments on that?
I guess, um.
Chris.
Uh the one thing I'd wonder is, um is it, do we know if this is gonna be phased and are each of these gonna be separate? Or are they gonna do do several of these segments at the same time? Or is it premature?
That would be a discussion for them, I know their intent is to have this done in one summer.
Okay.
So how how that how that would be phased, I have no idea if it'd be, they do the south side all at once, the north side or. One lane each direction at once, I guess that'd be, that's more of a, kind of that micro. Figure how that, they might not even know at this point how they would phase that.
Once we get into the weeds a little more, I'll be interested to see how the detouring will work and ambulance route will work to the hospital and. Different things like that, just out of curiosity.
And that's something that I think definitely the council is aware of and as once, once that final design, cuz again, kind of a, I maybe this is. We'd wrap this, put a bow on this discussion is, again, they're gonna look to get, um MinDOT's gonna be looking to get that municipal consent. Um probably early twenty twenty-two, cuz then at that point, what they're gonna be going into is that final design. Um because then they actually, the the they have to get it into their, the state has to get it into its budget. Um for funding, you know, they already kinda have a. A trunk highway fund, but they have to get it in into their budget for funding, shooting for twenty twenty-five to do this. And then I think that's when definitely the city gets gets more involved in once we know kind of what the design is going to be. Getting again into that micro of, okay, what are we doing for, you know, aesthetics, you know, having that discussion and planning. Which I know it's gonna be heavy on on Engineer Sandy. Is, you know, what do the detours look like? Um I think Laurel, you're gonna find that, if I had to guess, Laurel Street's gonna get nice and congested for a summer. But what do those look like and then how are how are we continuing to maintain access to our businesses? Um on two ten as well as at all those kinda in the periphery as well.
All right, so with that, um I think we'll wrap up this discussion, David, I think you know what we need to do. So at this point, I think we'll move on to item number eight, which is public forum time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the. Planning Commission, and so at this point, it is uh seven thirty-eight, I'll open public hearing. Is there an opportunity to speak and thank you for your patience?
No problem, hi everybody, Mike Higgins, eighteen oh one Mill Avenue, the former Wausau Paper Mill and fifteen eleven North Pacific. Road, the Northern Pacific Center. I'm actually glad I came here and got to listen, um you guys, uh I'm proud of you, you you're you're thinking about. This corridor and the boulevard and what this is gonna do to the city of Brainerd for the, you know, for twenty or thirty years. And I appreciate the time that you did take talking about it. I didn't come here to talk about it, but two things that I would like to just comment on. We have an opportunity to recreate a boulevard in our in our community and I. I'm not the person that would normally agree with that, I wanna get from point A to point B as fast as possible, but. You know, I I what I've learned here over the years is that, you know, we didn't want the. Thirty years ago when they built three seventy-one, the city of Brainerd kinda complained about bringing that down to our downtown area. So the state built a bypass and Baxter started and we all know the rest of that story. Um I think it's important to keep traffic flowing through our town, but it's also an opportunity to really make. A statement with what Brainerd is and, you know, I've said all along, Brainerd has something that nobody else has. Brainerd has something that Baxter can never get and that's a historic downtown, a river. And two of the most historic iconic buildings or properties in Minnesota. So the focus should be on that boulevard and recreating that old-school feel. Um and walkable and bikable and the whole nine yards, so Teresa, kudos to you for thinking that way. Um and I I I will be supporting that idea, that roundabout with the the bike paths and everything. That's the most insane thing thing I've ever seen in my life, that's that's gotta gotta get some work, so. Anyway, thanks, uh what I did come here tonight for is, um I've been talking to David and Jennifer. Um we are going to be asking for the BIC property to be rezoned, um and I just wanted to let you guys know that it's it's coming. Um we know that you guys are working on changing a lot of the zoning and and in our. In this codes and, you know, we're gonna be looking at getting that zone into a mixed use, um there's about a million. Opportunities popping up, um several different avenues. Um and we are just gonna wanna have some flexibility with that property in some, you know, doing something with the south forty acres. Um doing something with some of the river fronts, I'm not real sure that. Um you know, there's about five hundred and fifty thousand square foot of building there, I'm, you know, there's been some plans. Where we could downsize that building down to two to three hundred thousand square foot, um I think long-term I can keep. A couple hundred thousand square foot leased and do what I need to do for return on investment, and I'm just not sure that the rest of that property maybe doesn't have some better. Better uses or some better development opportunities moving forward, so. Um I just wanted to let you know it's coming, we're gonna start working with David and and figuring out, you know. The top five options of our master plan um over the next few years and then and then we're gonna be coming. And talking to you guys about it, so I just, out of transparency, wanted to let you know that we're gonna start that process.
What what property are you talking about?
The Paper Mill.
If I may, are you are you looking at mixed use as in business and commerce or retail? Industrial mixed use or are you looking at adding in residential?
We're, we want to add in a a probably new. Almost a new mixed use or a change of the mixed use that covers everything from housing to I two. Is what we're gonna be asking for. And and a couple other things I don't wanna talk about just yet because I'm still trying to figure out if it's it's actually feasible, but. But yeah, there's, you know, we just see some opportunity there for for mixed use, I don't wanna lose my I two zoning. You know, that's important to me because, you know, there's been some opportunities like Volkswagen that have popped up that have really, you know. Not just for me, but that that economic impact of Volkswagen in this community was huge, you know, we hired. Our payroll for that was massive, you know, at one point, we had fifty employees on that Volkswagen property. You know, right now Barrett's in there and they got about thirty people working every day, I got another eight or ten working there, you know, that place since. You know. Basically, since since conception has has averaged probably fifty people working there. At any given time, it's different tenants, you know, and it's and tenants grow and move on and everything, but it it's been a pretty substantial. Um you know, workforce development place, so I I really wanna be, try to, try to talk you guys into being flexible with that zoning. So that I have lots of options.
Mr. Chair and.
You may.
Mr. Higgins, uh the way we have done split zoning for the Franklin Art Center has been a blessing for the community. And it's been well utilized and I think that that's a a fantastic option.
And Mike, I think you've probably been familiar with some of the the idea play that we've had with your. Property during the um future land use process and thinking about. You know, in a in a in a future time, what what is, would this be, could this be and? And so I I'm looking forward to seeing what what your visual vision is for that.
Yeah, thanks.
And how that spins off with some of the 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 thought processes and exercises we've had.
You know, and I, I mean, to be asked with you two years ago before the Northern Pacific Center opportunity presented itself. There was a lot of discussions about should that rice lake, you know, above that dam, should that be developed into something in the hospitality industry? Or or something else and I and that still definitely is an option that I'd like to keep pursuing, but. I'm kinda busy at Northern Pacific Center now, so it hasn't been as high as a priority, you know, that, and NPC is gonna get some lodging. It's gonna have some some cabins coming in, we we are, you know, through our design phases of a hotel project and building one. And COVID kinda slowed everything down, but there's, you know, there's, that's coming, it's it's not a matter if we're gonna do it. It's just we're we're trying to get timing, timing right and, you know, post-COVID, you know, what happens with the wedding industry? Um it it's nuts, how the amount of weddings we're gonna have there in the next two years is is beyond my comprehension. We don't even know how we're gonna do it and we sell, we're selling two weddings a week for twenty-two and twenty-three, so. We have to get lodging those, you know, right now, those guests are going all over into the Brainerd Lakes area and we. We wanna capture that market and keep them in one place, so. Um you know, and that, like you, when you made the comment about the um. You know, event traffic, that that should be talked about, cuz we've seen, you know, the Easter egg hunt, you know, that was. At the tail end of COVID, it was three Facebook posts and we gave away six or seven bikes and there was literally five or six thousand people. There, we didn't, and and city police and traffic backed up from Little Caesar's to Cub and down to the fairgrounds and. I mean, it was nuts and I. I don't want that cuz it was a little bit stressful, but on the other hand, what a great opportunity to get people into Brainerd. And then, of course, the trail system connecting downtown Brainerd to Northern Pacific Center, you know, we we feel like we we wanna be part of downtown Brainerd. You know, if we can connect that with a really good walkable, bikable path, there's no reason that, you know, now we got a hotel. Within walking distance of downtown Brainerd, we've got a bike rental opportunity, we've got a golf cart opportunity rental, you know, we're. We don't talk about it a lot because we get, you know, we we talk about ideas and then people are like, well, they said they were gonna do that and they didn't. So I I don't like to talk about things until I know I'm gonna do it, but the these are all things that we as a as a group, my group. Have been discussing and and Dave and Jennifer have been pretty detailed in those discussions too, so. Anyway. Thanks for letting me talk. Thanks.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Higgins, appreciate that, look forward to your proposal. Is there anyone else, do we have anybody online, James? All right, well, then at this point in time at eight, excuse me, seven forty-eight, I'm gonna close public forum. And we'll move to item nine, Community Development Director's Report, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um mostly just a couple of things all related to the zoning code update. Um as I noted in my email when I sent out the packet for this meeting. Uh Mike and Jennifer are requesting that the commission has a workshop on a week from today on the September twenty-second. Um time hasn't been confirmed, but at this time, I think I'm recommending six o'clock for that workshop. The purpose of this workshop is we are moving into writing of code language. Um and so kind of what we're looking at from a a schedule perspective. Is over the next few months, again, with a goal of trying to get this code done and complete and adopted, probably looking at this point after a little of a. Little pause that we put in August is looking at, we're still shooting for about a February twenty twenty-two adoption. So we're kind of taking a pretty aggressive approach here, what we're looking at is doing a, on the twenty-second, doing a workshop. And in this workshop, we'll be discussing discussing residential standards, um that'll be on the twenty-second. And then on October eleventh, after the commission has had that discussion and made comments and such to. Um Mike and Jennifer, then on October eleventh. Um the council will be having a workshop at which those concepts will be presented to the city council. On that res- on those residential standards. And then on uh October twenty-seventh, so still again, the week after the regular planning commission meeting in October. The goal would then begin to again have a workshop and that would be on commercial and industrial standards. So again, we're gonna do residential first and commercial industrial. And then again, following that up in November with another workshop with the council, so we kinda go workshop, planning commission, workshop council, workshop planning commission, workshop council. And then in December would be the final, there'll be special areas and miscellaneous things that didn't quite fit into residential, commercial. And the plan there would actually be doing a joint workshop for that one on December fifteenth. That's the planning commission's regular meeting. Traditionally, we don't really have much that comes before the commission for consideration in December. Um, and with the moratorium, I'm not really seeing, and, and what I'm seeing out there right now, I don't anticipate we'd be having anything for the commission to actually act on. So the intention there is again, taking into account the holidays of this more of the special areas and the miscellaneous things that we can just have. It'll be a regular planning commission meeting. We'll invite the city council to attend that discussion. And then, pretty much at that point, what that would do was set us up to have rough, the, that first rough draft of that full code early twenty, early, early in January of twenty twenty-two, we'd be seeing that full dra- draft of that, of that code. Um, so that's what we're looking for. Um, again, because of that, that timeline, that's why after discussion, Scott, discussing with Mike and Jennifer, that's why we decided to go that path of doing all residential, not necessarily doing it by character area, but we're gonna discuss all the residential standards together, all the commercial industrial standards together, and then all those other miscellaneous things. So that's what we're looking for, for the kind of the schedule for the next few months. Um, and then also, speaking of the twenty-second, we are gonna have, take that opportunity, why they're gonna be up here, they're gonna come up earlier in the day, and our intention is we're gonna do a pop-up open house downtown that afternoon, um, using it as an opportunity to do more public engagement. Um, in January, we'll likely be doing a formal open house after we have a full, full first draft of that code. Um, but we got, but we've discovered that, you know, we wanna get more public input. I think we've had some expression from the city council to ensure that we're keeping the public involved. So we're gonna be doing this open house downtown. This is something Mike and Jennifer have done before, and they felt like they've actually gotten some pretty good comments for that, where you're just kind of out and about, and people are walking by, and you're just kind of grabbing them and talking to them versus having people have a formal meeting that people don't come to. Um, and so that is our plan for, for next week. Um, we, I intend on drafting a little, you know, paragraph that we're hoping to get into the dispatch as well also put on our Facebook page, letting people know that we're gonna be doing that. Um, and so people can start looking out for that. Um, and just getting a little more on, on that heavy on that public engagement, maybe putting some other things in the future months in the dispatch as well, just kind of gearing people up, me keeping, pe- keeping it in the, in the public's eye, um, so that maybe when we get to that, that formal open house in the beginning of the year when we have that draft, you know, maybe we'll actually get some people to attend that, so those public hearings as well, and people can be, you know, I've been hearing about this, you know, I've interacted, I've seen them out and about, and now that we're getting to that full code, I'm interested to see where they ended up. Um, so that is that schedule moving forward. Um, any comments or questions from the commission regarding kind of what the process is looking like moving forward?
David, could you just quickly give the dates again?
Yep. So for the commission, we're looking at a, so next Wednesday, September twenty-second. Um, again, we'll be talking residential standards. And then Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, that'll be, um, commercial, and then the regular meeting on December fifteenth. So that's when, that's when the, those are the, the commission-specific workshops. And the council will be hearing, will be being presented those things on October eleventh and November eighth.
For miscellaneous sections, when was that gonna happen?
The fifteenth, December fifteenth.
On December fifteenth, that's the joint?
That's the joint meeting, that's just the miscellaneous, special areas, kind of things that don't fit into the, the larger commercial or residential buckets.
All right, thank you.
So if there are any other questions on that, the only other thing I, I, I will have, I'll, I'll make mention of, um, is the planning, the parking commission meets tomorrow. Um, they are working on putting the final touches to what they're called the parking plan. It's a plan for kind of been putting some parking recommendations specifically around the downtown. Um, and then they're actually also planning on presenting, they have requested to present that to the city council in workshop, um, so they'll actually be doing that on October eleventh as well. So October eleventh, that's a double, um, zoning code parking commission workshop. Um, once the commission kind of puts its bow on that parking recommendations, I'll also send it to the, to the planning commission, so you guys can also see it as well. Um, be encouraged to kind of tune into that workshop as well to hear those recommendations. Um, part of them, one of the recommendations does invol- does involve amending ordinance. Um, so that would, that would come before the planning commission, um, for review. Um, that would be something that'd be definitely tasked directly to the planning commission regarding, um, parking, um, requiring like a parking plan or things for, for, for downtown properties. So, um, that is one thing that'll likely end up, if adopted by the, the council, would end up in the planning commission's lap. But I think the recommendations they're making regarding parking specifically around the downtown are, I think, very thorough, thought through. Um, and it'll be interesting to see once those recommendations are made to council, kind of what, what the council takes from that and where that goes in the next year or so. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
So David, am I hearing that on the eleventh of October, council was going to be dealing with two, two workshop i- items here, one being the zoning?
The residential standards, the other one being?
Standards, and the other is going to be dealing with some recommendations from the parking commission?
Correct.
Well, that seems like a busy night. Okay.
Ideally, I would say personally ideally, I would love to have them as separate items, but, um, we work with what the, what the council will give us and try to make the best of it.
Questions of, uh, David?
Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chansky, will we have the opportunity to get a, an online link to view that meeting, or would you recommend that we go to the October eleventh?
I'll talk to, uh, Administrator Bergman, how we plan on having that meeting, whether they're planning on having it here or in, um, the fire hall where we've had them before. If it's in this chambers, then it'll definitely be livestreamed. Um, if it's not in, um, in here and it's over like at the fire hall, then I'll definitely let you know. If it's in the fire hall, we don't livestream those, but there are public meetings open for people to attend. So, I'll talk to, talk to her. I don't know, think she's made a, made it a plan yet, which, whether it'll be here or over there.
Are there any, um, open meeting implications for that if?
There potentially could be, um, being that, actually, I said potentially, I think there would be. Um, in being that, that the zoning code is an item on there, but if we had a quorum of the commission that wanted to attend, that's not a problem. We just need to know that at least three days in advance, so we can get that, um, noticed. And what we could do too is just, I could just notice, notice it that there, we did this before, there may be a quorum present that covers us, if there is, if there's not, it's not a big deal.
And that, that may be an appropriate way to, to handle that, um, so we'll deal with that, but we can assess that probably Wednesday, next week, just after we get, um, through our workshop, maybe have a?
So I guess the last thing I'll just add then is it's confirmed is six P M. next Wednesday work for the commission to have that workshop.
I personally can't make next week or the twenty-seventh.
Okay. Is there, is there, uh, twenty-seventh of October? Is there a better date for that, for you?
I just happen to have worked things both those Wednesdays.
And we can, if, we can also confer about, the twenty-seventh isn't necessarily locked in stone. So if there's a, if there's a date that works better for the commission, or the commission is flexible with, we can work with Mike and Jennifer and see if they can come in. It doesn't have to be a Wednesday that the commission meets.
And, and if that date works better for everyone else, I'm fine. I just, I've been doing more travel now for work, so it's been a little difficult on Wednesdays.
Mr. Erickson?
Uh, I currently have a conflict as well. Uh, trying to look to see if it's both dates. They're both Wednesdays?
Yeah, the twenty-second, twenty-second.
I currently have a conflict. I can get that changed, although it's not a big deal. I'll be there regardless, but if there's others.
For the twenty-seventh, we have probably more opportunity to?
Yeah, at this point, the twenty-second is kind of the date. At this point, we, cause they're gonna be planning up here, coming up doing the pop-up. Um, I think they're also planning on doing some, um, aerial photography for a, the video that they're planning on doing, so. They are planning on being here at the twenty-second regardless.
So could we, are folks comfortable sliding either, either to Tuesday or Thursday of that same week, the twenty-sixth or the twenty-eighth?
And I can also send if commission, if, if, if people would like, I can send out a doodle poll and trying to get like what days work, so then I can speak with Mike and Jennifer and figure out, does an alternate date work for them as well?
Yeah, all right.
We'll do, I'll, I'll, I'll send out a doodle poll for the October workshop.
That might be best, especially since we're down two at this point.
Yep, yep, we can reach out that way. All right. Okay, uh, moving on to item ten, Commissioner, comments and questions. Maybe we'll start, uh, Mr. Erickson, come on down the, the table here.
Um, I guess just really good meeting, nothing to really add other than the discussion we had. It's encouraging to hear. Sounds like we're at least in the same direction as far as the two-ten. Fairly unified voice. That's really all I'd say.
And we're moving efficiently?
Both down and across.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Whitworth?
Um, I am feeling pretty passionate about the two-ten reconstruction. What I don't wanna see is a division in our community, a line through it that separates two halves that can't, can't operate without each other, so I'm, I'm happy that we're all working on trying to uphold our comprehensive plan and put that at the forefront and make all of these properties a little better in the process of this reconstruction project rather than detracting from something. I read some very good material over the last couple of weeks. And, um, I think one of the high points that I took away from it was that infrastructure should be created to add value and add value to property and add prosperity to a community, and if you create infrastructure that that detracts from the community or infrastructure that damages property values and business values, that your infrastructure is not operating properly and you have not designed it correctly. That's where I'm at on that.
Thank you. Mr. Galrus?
Uh, yeah, not too much to add. A good meeting, uh, the two-ten corridor, I think that's, it's obviously a big discussion topic, and I think I'm biased on that, that roundabout and what happens there, so I'm excited to, uh, have our meeting with Minda hopefully and see what they have to say and get their input and understand that a little bit better, but, uh, yeah, just looking forward to that and, uh, next week, so.
Thank you. Mr. Foley?
Um, just apologize for not being here the last two meetings. I'm surprised you guys were able to make any progress without me, quite frankly, but, um, I'm glad to be back and, um, trying to make, make what I can and contribute, and uh, we've got a good group here and it's exciting. We've got a zoning code on the horizon and, um, so good stuff. Thanks.
It's nice to have you back with us, so. All right, and with that, um, you know, I, I appreciate everyone's patience as we, we kind of did the long slog through the sober house, and I think it was a a necessary, um, exploration and, and, and making sure that, uh, we've thought our way through that well, and we provide good guidance to city council. So thank you for your, your staying on that and giving good input and good thoughts on that, so appreciate that. And, and yes, uh, Highway two-ten, um, is gonna be looming large in our future, and so I think we have good opportunity to do more visioning on that as well. I mean, we'll have the conversations around that, uh, you know, with the appropriate, uh, guidance from, uh, Director Chansky to think also about sort of the, 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 the way that we can adapt, um, the tools that we have within our, our ordinance, uh, and in our comprehensive plan to be able to, to, to capitalize on this opportunity that, uh, whether it's making, making aesthetic improvements or design improvements that, uh, make it, uh, more friendly for, for our citizens in our community. Looking forward to that, so. With that, um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
And Whitworth, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed, same sign, and we are done. Thank you very much, everybody.